Okay. Good morning. I want to thank everybody for coming this morning. And I especially want to thank my colleagues who have joined us this morning, to my far-right Speaker Juan Pat, former Speaker Joe T. Sinagastin, Senator Mike Sinicolas, Senator Mike Luntiaco, Senator Tom Ada, Senator Eileen Yamashita, Senator Tommy Morrison, and Senator Brandon McCready have joined us this morning for this roundtable discussion. I, the GovGuam Retirement Fund had sent a letter to Speaker Ben in June of this year and attached to it was Bill 394. Unfortunately, Senator Ben was unable to address it at that time. Due to his untimely passing, it was delayed even further, and then with the budget and several other things that we had to address, this kept getting pushed back. But I'm intent on moving this forward somehow because the education curve on this one is really high, and if I have to go through it a second time, I don't know if I will survive. I want to thank the Retirement Fund for coming, and I see that their actuary, Mr. Wright, has joined the team from the Retirement Fund. From the Retirement Fund, we have their chairman, Speaker Joe T., Mr. Jerry Cruz, who's the public sector, private community representative on the board, Ms. Blosz, who's their executive director, President Dr. Wilfred Leon Guerrero, who is a retiree representative, correct? With Speaker Joe T., are both retiree representatives. Mr. David O'Brien, who is the D.C. representative, is also present. I got a call early this morning from Senator Tony Blosz, the other D.C. member on the board, who said he will be coming, but he'll be a few minutes late. For this morning's roundtable, we've also invited Mr. David John, who has contributed considerable amount of testimony and discussion to this, and I thought the only way that we're going to finally get this side of the table to understand is for that side of the table to really help us understand what's going on. And we've taken the liberty of inviting Ms. Alice Tyron, who is a representative of Great West, who is the representative for Mercer, who is, no? Third, oh, I'm sorry, third-party administrator for the D.C. plan. And during the discussion, the judiciary all of a sudden sent testimony. So I said, "All right, we'll get the judiciary here," and Mr. Chris Padasi, who is there, a finance person over there, is also here to at least present some of the concerns that have been addressed by other members of the judiciary. Judge Michael Vidalia was quite vocal and contributed considerable amount of input into this discussion. He came to the public hearing, he sent testimony, and was also on the air discussing this. And so I'm glad that we have this huge roundtable because I'm hoping that people will now start asking questions and addressing some of their major concerns. I'm not sure how my colleagues want this to go. We had the screen up, but I think all of you have seen the presentation that was made during the committee of the whole. I think I'd just like to go around the table with especially the senators to just ask the one nagging question that is bothering you, that needs to be addressed in order for us to either move forward or permanently bury this, whichever one. I just need to, I just need to hear from my colleagues what their major issues and concerns are, and hopefully, when it's raised by the members of the legislature, that the panel, the representatives in the industry and from Retirement Fund will assist in addressing the issues and assuaging their concerns, hopefully. And so I know she has problems speaking, but I'm sure if she slides the microphone close enough to her mouth that we'll be able to hear what the speaker's concerns are and see if we can address some of them. Madam Speaker.
Morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Anyway, my note, the very first one I asked was the Secure Foundation and, and, Secure Foundation. Sorry. So, this came as a result of--
Okay, maybe I can help you with that.
Yes, okay, thank you.
When Speaker Joe T. came and spoke at the Committee of the Whole, he mentioned that there were four things that the Retirement Fund had considered, and one of them was secured foundations. And Speaker Juan Pat got ahold of the notes, and she noted that that was there. And maybe a lengthier discussion about exactly what secured foundation is might be able to at least enlighten us, since that's one of her major issues. If you would, Alice, just talk about what the, what the plan is and maybe what it isn't. And I think we need to be all just really upfront about everything, about what you can and cannot do, and why, and there are positives to everything, but we also need to know what the negatives are so that my colleagues are going to be informed, okay?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Secure Foundation is an investment option. It is not a plan. It is currently the default investment option for defined contribution members who have not actively elected their investments.
Why don't you explain what default?
Oh, I apologize, yes. We get participants who choose not to make, not to choose their investments until a later time, so until such time that they do, they're set, they're sent into the, into the Secure Foundation Fund, depending upon the year that they'll turn 65. A secure foundation is a target date. So the target date is the year that an individual is going to be 65 or near 65, and that's how it works. So an individual who hasn't actively chosen would be placed in that fund until such time that they do.
And what does it provide?
Secure Foundation, like I mentioned, is a target date. It's an investment option, and it provides a deferred annuity. A deferred annuity is a lifetime payment. It is a, it provides, we refer to it as Secure Foundation because it provides a secure foundation in that. It addresses certain risks, inflation risk, investment risk, longevity risk. It provides a payment for life, so an individual doesn't outlive their retirement annuity. So it's a payment for life. It's a guaranteed annual withdrawal payment for life. It's an annuity.
And how much does that cost, and what, how long has it been in existence?
It's been with the plan, I believe, since 2011. However, this year was made the default fund, so it's been a part of the investment choices and options for participants. It's about 2011, 2012, maybe 2012. So it's been here. It's, participants in the D.C. and the 457 plan have the option to choose. They're free to choose whatever investment options they want or fits their, their needs. We conduct seminars and education, and we guide them in that process. So Secure Foundation has been part of that choice.
But you say 2012. Has, has secured foundations started to provide annuities to anybody in the country that, and so we know what its track record is so that the members know exactly what that, what it's?
Not, not here on Guam. I can check with our office, our home office, to see if we have numbers with regard to Secure Foundation. We have, I believe, a printout, or we, I might be able to pull a report that would show current annuities that a person may receive at this point in time, but that's just going to be based on account balances. How Secure Foundation works is 10 years prior to the target date, a fee will be assessed. That fee pays for the guarantee. It pays for the annuity. All right, so regardless of market situation, market fluctuation, it protects, it always protects a participant from a down market. So, gosh, I don't have any handouts, and I did provide them the last time. If a, let's say we calculated a participant's account, and they were to receive, based on the fund value, $30,000 a year. All right, this is 10 years prior. And then the market dips, and then the fund value decreases, it's recalculated, and based on that decrease, the participant will receive $25,000 a year. The, the floor is, remains at 30,000. And when the market increases or performs well, and the fund value increases, the floor adjusts with the increase. So the benefit, the guaranteed annual benefit never decreases, can only increase, with the exception of excess withdrawals, which may decrease the withdrawal, the benefit, rather, at that point in time.
So my question then is that you're saying that regardless of the market, there's always that floor?
There's always a floor, yes.
And that the employee, the retiree, will never suffer from the, the market dropping? They're, they're always protected at a particular level?
Their benefit, their floor is always protected. The floor can never decrease unless a participant makes excess withdrawals. All right, so it's flexible in that regard, is if a participant says, you know, for whatever reason, five years into retirement, there's a medical situation, and they need excess cash, they have access to that. Unlike a fixed annuity, you can't withdraw, make withdrawals. With this type of product investment option, they can make an extra withdrawal, and it won't decrease the guaranteed benefit. It remains at that point that we've calculated at. However, it still has the opportunity to increase.
Is the withdrawal allowed in Secure Foundation? And so, and if it is, Paula's nodding her head.
Yes.
So then, but it's also allowed in the regular, in the, in the current plan?
As an act, if you're talking about, as active employees, Government of Guam employees have the option to withdraw under three different hardship conditions, and the board did a really good job at decreasing that and making it a little stricter because our experience has been, participants would come in, back in the day when it was much loose, much less strict, strict, participants would withdraw, and we were experiencing and seeing accounts decrease to almost zero. So they would come in and withdraw for five different hardships. So now they're only allowed as active participants in the 401 to withdraw under three different hardships. All right, once you withdraw from the 401, you can never pay it back. So you've lost time, you've lost earnings, so you'll never be able to make that up unless you maybe double your contributions or something through the 457. But in the 401, you can only withdraw for three different hardships. You'll never be able to pay it back. That's different from being able to take a withdrawal from Secure Foundation once it's been implemented, in that you're already at the retirement age, you've already retired, this is your annuity, this is your lifetime payment, and in the event you need extra cash, you can access it. So that's, that's, that's a benefit for retirees, the ability to take it with them wherever they go, the ability to access excess cash and a floor. So that is a benefit.
But if they don't pay it back after they've withdrawn it, and they don't pay it back, the guaranteed floor is no longer there, is it? Or is it greatly reduced, the amount that they can receive?
Are we talking, we're speaking of them at retirement?
Yes.
All right, they can't, the floor's there. We will recalculate it and adjust it for the withdrawal, the amount that it's withdrawn, and the floor remains. All right, they can't pay it back. They won't be able to pay that back at retirement. However, that floor can increase, given the fund value increase. Should the market do well, the, it increases with them. So the floor can increase at that point in time. They can't pay it back, but the floor can increase.
This thing about a guaranteed lifetime annuity after they, after they reach that
target date, is the Secure Foundation different from a defined benefit plan that we have? I mean, that's what the defined benefit plan that we have right now does, right?
Yes. The, well, the, I imagine the defined benefit plan is a fixed annuity. It's based on the formula. It's formula-based, based on the average of your three highest salaries, years of contribution, et cetera. A Secure Foundation is going to be determined by, the biggest impact on a, on a person's account is their contributions and what they've done with that account. So Secure Foundation, or the guaranteed withdrawal benefit, will be determined by the fund value and the age of the individual. I believe age, if you start to draw down an age from 55 to 64, it's a 5% withdrawal, or 4%, I apologize. And then 65 to 69 is 5%. So that'd be 5% off of the total account balance. So the, if you have, I mean, you know, if, if you have a small account balance, then that 5% or 4% won't be a whole lot. Right, but if you have a larger balance, then there's a potential that you could earn or have a secure floor that may meet your needs. It just really all depends on how a participant treats their account, their contributions, how much they've been putting in, whether they've accessed funds through the years. So that would be the biggest difference between the two. It provides a floor. It provides survivor annuities for life. All right, a participant, the difference is, in the DB plan, the participant doesn't have a choice, I believe. They have to provide. In the D.C. plan, the participant can choose whether or not to provide survivor annuity. That's another difference, you know. It, the, the floor can increase with market performance, which helps to address longevity issues, maybe, and even inflation. All right, I don't know how the, I believe the DB plan offers 2% inflation increases, annual increments. So those would be the differences.
How much would you need to get the 30,000?
A 30,000 rate of, um, payment?
Yeah.
I did, I haven't had a chance to update this information, but at a 10% contribution, what I did, what we did several years ago was, if a person wanted to earn, you know, I can't give you, like, 30,000 numbers, 30,000, but I can give you income replacement ratios. An individual starting younger, the longer they have to invest and earn, all right, the greater their chances of having income replacement ratio meeting 80 to over 100%, right? But the older they are, I have, at a 10% contribution rate, if the average age of an individual is 39, 40 years old, all right, and let's say they earned, the average annual salary is 38,000, okay? They have a payout at age 65 of 5%. They would have an income replacement ratio of about 17%. So they would have, they would need, for 17%, that's like 127, 128,000 dollar account. If they wanted to increase that, they would need 500,000. So, I mean, it just all depends on how long they can contribute, how much they've contributed, and what they wanted at that point in time.
For the employees that we have now, say those that are, that were hired in the D.C. plan 20 years ago, they'd be, what?
If they're--
Forty years old now and, and younger. I mean, how, how, how much would they need to have contributed into that to be able to, to get the kind of benefits you're, you're talking about there?
Two times the salary, yeah. You're looking back 20 years ago if they started out, I'd say--
Two times the salary?
500,000.
Well, if you're asking how much they should have today, you're asking how much they should have today. Say they're making 40,000 today, then at age 40, they should have about 80.
800.
Well, at that point in time, about 80, but then continuing to contribute towards 65, then they--
By 65, how much should they have in the account?
Eight times their final pay, roughly.
Eight times.
So you're looking at about almost 800, almost 100,000?
Yeah, about 100,000.
Yeah. For about, yeah.
And how many of the current employees have something like that?
None.
The highest balances?
No. It's about 300,000, the highest.
Currently, of the D.C., of the D.C. employees?
Yes.
The one with the highest balances, about 300?
We have a, yes, about 300, maybe 400,000.
How old is that employee?
The employee is close to, is a little over 55, but, yeah, they're over 55, and that was a DB/DC transfer. These guys were, those with higher balances were DB/DC transfers.
But the, but the straight-up DC, well, we're still having problems with some of those that left DB and want to come back in and are complaining about this DB/DC transfer. So the, the employee currently with, with the 350 was, was one of those that was a little older because he had, he or she had been a DB employee and is now a D.C. employee.
Our participants with higher balances in the six-digit numbers are DB/DC transfers. Those in the, that are just straight DC, having started, are not even near, unless they're contributing to the 457, and few of them do.
They don't even have six figures, the, the straight-up DCs?
No. You might, no. Unless they're doctors or professors, but the highly compensated ones and taking advantage of the 457. But in the, with the 5% contribution rate and the government's 5, no. There's few with high balances.
So what would they need to be able to completely take advantage of the maximum in, in your, in your plan to? You talk about 10%, but right now they're at 5%, right?
Yes, their 5% contribution rate. Yeah, that's what they're contributing, 5% of their pay.
But, but is that to be matched by 5% from the government?
Yes. The total, the total amount being contributed to the D.C. plan, all right, Secure Foundation aside, is 10%. 5% from the government and 5% from the participant. This is a defined contribution plan, and so the biggest impact on an individual's account would be the contribution rate. The more participants, and I'm speaking in general, it's a contribution plan, the more a participant saves and contributes, the greater their chances of amassing and/or accumulating potentially enough for retirement. The more time they have until retirement, the greater their chances and the likelihood of amassing and accumulating more for retirement. So speaking honestly, that is, the more you contribute, and we see that in participants who are D.C. members, straight D.C. members, and participating in the 457, the more they contribute in their 457 because they can, they're capped at 5% with, on the D.C. side, the greater their account balances. They increase contributions through the 457. So those, you'll see 457 account balances exceeding 401 account balances because participants are, may be contributing more than that 5% or that 10% allotted to them. So the, the more they contribute, the more time they have, the greater their chances of amassing, and of course, the investments would be like the third.
Can you just clarify this 457? I think I understand what the 401 is.
The 401 is the mandatory plan, all right, it's 1995. The 457 is a deferred compensation plan. It's, you think of it as an additional savings for retirement. So if a participant in the 401, whether they're a DB member or a D.C. member, wanted to save more towards retirement, they would do it through the 457. D.C. members are encouraged to save more towards retirement because currently they're only contributing 5%, and the government matches them 5%. So if they want to contribute more, they're encouraged to do it through the 457, or any other plan that they may want outside of the government's offering of the 457. The 457 is a cousin to a 403B. The parameters are different. 457 would be for state and municipal employees. A 403B would be for those in the field of education and/or some medical, the hospitals and so forth, medical field. So 457 is just an additional savings plan. It's voluntary, and it's available to all Government of Guam employees participating either in the DB plan or the 401. There is no government match in the 457. It's solely the participant in that 457. The rates of return differ depending upon the type of investments they have. They do have, the government has provided, the board has provided a really good arrangement of funds. They have a total of about 26 different options. Several of them are target date funds, Secure Foundation, of course, and they do have, I believe it was just this year or late last year, investment advice and managed accounts available to them, so a participant can avail themselves of that. We don't give investment advice here. We can provide guidance. We provide the education. We sit with them, we talk to them about, you know, just everything, but we'll go through that with them. So, and that's available in both the 401 and the 457, and even for DB members, those in the defined benefit plan as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was brought up that a lot of the larger balances are DB members who convert to the D.C.
That's been our experience.
But the lower balances are the pure D.C. members?
Yes.
But how much of those lower balances are as a result of the poor default options that we had in the initial rollout of the D.C. plan? Because I know that when we first rolled it out, the defaults were money market accounts and, and those, those returns, and those are for many years, and those returns, of course, were very, very low. So for the, for the pure D.C. members, and the reason why I'm asking this question is because I really need to reconcile whether or not the D.C. plan is, in and of itself, a bad plan or not. And if the conversation's going to be about balances, we need to really get under the, get to the root of why those balances are what they are. And so are the new D.C. plan member balances low because the D.C. plan is a bad plan, or could it potentially be low because of returns all tanking? Or is it low because a lot of D.C. plan members were put into default options that did not generate returns, and they were stuck, and they were, and they were stuck in those default options, and, and some of them actually haven't even moved out of those default options?
Can I interject? I think all of the above, but I just want to throw some numbers at you. Because the question is coming up, it just keeps, is a D.C. plan a bad thing? In the private sector, the employee contributes 6.2% to the Social Security, plus, you know, the addition goes to Medicaid, but 6.2 to the Social Security. The employer puts in 6.2 to the Social Security. Then on top of that, what is advocated is a minimum contribution of 10%. So you add those up, 6.2, 6.2 plus 10, you're at 22.4% contribution going towards retirement in one way or the other. The 401A plan is 5 plus 5, and almost no one is availing themselves to the 457 plan. I made a joke when we bid on the plan a few years ago, there was 460 people signed up. I said, "Are you sure this isn't a 460 plan?" And it's a bad joke. 12,000 people are eligible for that plan. Even the DB members are eligible for the 457. It's the greatest plan on earth. You can put your money in, earn tax-free, take your money out, not be penalized like a 401K plan, and we have maybe 1,000 employees availing themselves to it? This plan hasn't been given anywhere near its ability to even go anywhere because it's been underfunded from day one. How are we contributing 30% of payroll to a defined benefit plan that's been shut down for 20 years, and somehow we're scraping around to put 5% into this 401A plan? And then we're blaming it on the 401A plan? You're blaming, people are blaming it on Great West? The plan's never been structured correctly. It's never had the funding. It's never had a chance to succeed. So, I mean, yes, the last 10 years, obviously everyone knows, you've gone through, since the plan's been in existence, you went through the dot-com, you went through 9/11, you went through the financial crisis. None of that helped. None of that helps. And up until a few years ago, the default options, it was not Great West's fault, it's not the retirement fund's fault, there was no guidance on default options. So money market was it. And so that's one of the things that's, that's come up over the last few years, is now the proper metrics are in place. But the plan's been run like a savings and investment plan, like it's in addition to Social Security, when it has been the replacement for Social Security. Had it been funded correctly from day one, and had you run it like a base plan, then we wouldn't be in this situation. So we never have given this system the tools to succeed. We've given them just the bare scraps and then left it up to Great West to try to make it work for people. It's never been supported correctly, and the contribution structure isn't where near where it should be. So the answer is yes, you know, there's, there is some that has to do with the default options because that's what the federal government set for default options, and some of it had to do with the market. But hundred percent, I mean, the majority of the, the reason is, is how much money's been contributed to it. The government has been contributing five percent when the private sector is supposed to be the cheap one on this, contributes ten point two. Private sector puts six point two into Social Security and they put four percent in their 401K plan. So, the private sector's doing twice as much as the government on this regard. And same with the private sector employees that are contributing. So, I mean, it's, 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 the contribution structure's put this thing behind the eight ball, by far.
Senator San Nicholas, thank you for the question. You asked what's, what would be the impact on these, on the defined contribution plans, and I speak in general. The biggest impact would be contributions and then the participant's ability to withdraw, access those funds. That impacts a participant's balance a lot. And like I mentioned earlier, participants were using their retirement savings as a go-to credit union or bank. And the fund did a really great job at, at closing that off. So those were the biggest impact. Yes, the money market may have had an impact because of the, the low rates, rates of return, but the biggest impact would be their contributions and access to their funds. I hope that answered your.
So the DC plan is not a bad plan?
The DC, defined, I'm going to speak in general, defined contribution plans are not bad plans. They are not bad plans. It's what participants do with that or not do that make it, make them, that make them have a bad.
And it's also the weight of contributions of the employee and of the employer that also have a, a large bearing on.
It's a defined contribution plan, so contributions make a difference. The more you contribute, the greater your chances. And the more you save for retirement, the greater your chances of amassing for retirement.
Could I interject one more thing? And there's also this, conceptually, whenever we're planning for retirement for a company, we'll ask them a real simple question. Is this plan a retirement plan or is it a savings and investment plan? Because you can go either way with it. If it's going to be a retirement plan, then you run it like a retirement plan. Employees in the defined benefit plan can't come in and take distributions. They can't come in and take lump sum distributions at retirement. So why we ran the four oh one A plan, which is supposed to be our base plan, like a savings and investment plan is beyond, beyond me. I mean, not only should, I mean, they've done a good job closing it up to the three, but this is our social, this is these employees' Social Security plan. Their options while working should be zero. No one should have access to that four oh one A plan. It should be, you leave your money in there until you retire. Now, if you, if you're only with the government a few years and you can prove that you've been in Social Security somewhere else, then get a lump sum out. I'm talking about people that are working towards retirement in the government. The four oh one A plan should be set in such a way that no distributions, no hardship distributions, nothing, just like Social Security. I can't go down to Social Security Administration and take a hardship. Employees can't go over to the DB plan and say, I need to go to Manila for my, for my wife's medical procedure, can I take a loan from my DB plan? The four oh one A plan was set up to be the base and it was run like a savings and investment plan. So the, getting it down to three is a great start, but it should be zero. The employee should have access to that money at retirement, unless, again, they can prove that they're covered by Social Security somewhere else. And at that point in time, either an annuity or a time certain payout. If someone's unhealthy, one of the things where, you know, having options brings to play is, if someone's unhealthy, you don't want to make them go to an annuity when you know they're not going to be with us thirty-six months from now. But it's either an annuity or a time payout at retirement. The four fifty-seven plan is your savings and investment program. That's the one where you match it as an employer. The government should have been matching that one all along, encouraging employees to save. If the government would have done a match, even if it was two percent on the, on, or twenty-five cents on the dollar up to eight percent, you would have gotten employees to contribute. That plan can be run like a 401K plan. That plan can take loans and do all those sorts of things to help people with their financial events. But the four oh one A plan is the base plan. It was these employees and is these employees' Social Security. They should have zero access to it. And, and that's, that's the piece on that one. And then if you take that and you guarantee the rate of return, which the government can do, then you can have it in such a way that it's planned without having to incur all these additional liabilities. So, so the, the problem is, is the four oh one A plan was set up as a savings and investment plan when it was your base plan. And if it was run like a base plan and the four fifty-seven was run with a matching program along the way, you wouldn't be here with forty thousand dollar balances for a sixty-five-year-old. You'd be here with a significant amount of money set up. But the, the plan was, was run from day one wrong. So it's not the plan. You could run a great DB plan, you can run a great DC plan, you can rate a great combination of them, or you can run bad ones. Our defined benefit plan has saddled a pretty dire situation. The retirement fund's been doing a good job, you know, keeping, keeping the plan afloat. But a hundred and fifty million dollar liability, a hundred, one point five billion dollar liability for a four billion dollar economy, you know, that's a problem plan. This plan's been a problem plan. So whatever we do going forward, we need to do it right this time. That's, that's one thing.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Just while not disagreeing with anything, I think David and Ellis have done a good descriptive job for you of, you know, what those plans are about. I think what we have to keep in context in this roundtable discussion are the, the questions that we need answered. In other words, you know, what are the benefits that are being provided by the options that are there? What are the risks associated with those various plans? What are the costs of those plans? And then, I think last but not least is, what is the impact going forward, new employees? What is the impact on the people who are now in the DC plan? So I think if we keep those frameworks in mind and ask questions related to that framework rather than just being descriptive, because we can be descriptive all day and I think we'll be lost in, in terms of the details of the description. I think, you know, if you consider those things, risks, benefits, costs, and, you know, how it affects the new employees, how it affects the current employees, I think those are things we ought to consider as well.
And, Mr. Chairman, I very much agree with Mr. O'Brien. And I would also like to further expand it that we don't just look at the, the cost benefit of either scenario, but we also look at the cost benefit as it relates to the different groups that we're trying to address here. And this is, this is something that's been on my mind a lot, because it's like we're trying to find a one-size-fits-all solution for various demographics within the Government of Guam that have different circumstances. For example, we have those defined benefit people who converted and who have drew from their DC plan and who now can't retire. We have DC employees who had poor default options in the beginning, that stagnated their returns, and now they can't retire. We have current DC employees who are doing just fine. And we have the, the question of the new employees, and what, what kind of a retirement system are we going to provide for them? And that's why this whole, and I'm very grateful, Mr. Chairman, for the roundtable, and I think that this dialogue is going to be very, very healthy, and I don't think it's going to be the last one we have either. But I, I'm really curious as to why we're trying to find the one-size-fits-all solution for these different groups and not also considering finding individual solutions for these individual groups and, and going from there. Because for me, with all these growing pains that we've also had with the defined contribution plan, that's, that's actually progress. You know, I mean, we've, we've seen a lot of, a lot of bumps in the road, but we've worked towards fixing it. And the more progress we make towards refining what we have, I think the better going forward. Implementing something new would, of course, bring, bring with it its own bumps in the road all over again. But I, I just, my, my overall question, Mr. Chair, that I would like to have answered is, why are we trying to find a one-size-fits-all solution for all of these different types of affected employees versus trying to find an individual solution that would address the circumstances of each of these individual employees?
Anybody from the retirement fund care to try to address that one? I mean, I think we left out one group there. Also, the law enforcement group, who insists that they should be a completely different group. Because, or at least I'm getting those emails. I don't know how many of you are, but I'm getting the emails of law enforcement figuring that they should have a completely separate, different.
You know, Mr. Vice Speaker and Senator, I think that's a, a good question, is, is, you know, well, one-size-fits-all and all of that. I think, oh, sorry, that's about it. I, I believe the, many of the answers are in best practices. You know, in other words, we're not the only government addressing these particular issues. They're being addressed throughout the states, other territories. And so there are, and there's a whole industry that surrounds this type of thing. As you know, APAFs, which Jerry and I are also members of, officers of, is having a roundtable at the coming conference on, on just these things. So there are multiple solutions, there's multiple agendas, there's multiple objectives. I think very much it depends on how the policymakers, you guys, see the objectives for this plan. What are your objectives for the retirement system plan? And, you know, if you start there, it's a whole lot easier to craft something from, from that point going forward versus what we're, you know, seemingly doing, which is bubbling up a lot of options and then trying to, as you say, shoehorn it to, to various people. That's, that's an almost impossible task. I think, you know, in, in, you know, the time I've spent with the GGRF board, that's what we've tried to do. We've tried to start with some pretty, what we think to be socially responsible and achievable objectives and craft a, you know, solution around those objectives. So I think, you know, at least from our side, we have an approach that we, you know, not perfect. You can always surround it with different things. But we have an approach that I think puts one leg, leg of the stool there, and that's the leg that should be the responsibility of the government. You know, I think to, to address your question, another leg of the stool, and this is just typical, and we've discussed it the last time we met, is the responsibility of the individuals themselves. You know, some people want a very robust retirement, some people want current consumption that they want to spend. So I think you, we have to discuss things in those terms, you know. What are the criteria we want? What are the objectives we're trying to achieve? And what ought the individuals to be doing for themselves? I think with that kind of mentality, I think that we can, together, craft a policy solution that'll get us from here to there. I think if we keep bubbling up options, man oh man, we're going to spend all day with competing statistics, very technical descriptions of plans and, and that type of thing. So, so thank you for the question. I thought it was a good one.
Just a couple of questions in, in, like, the methodology that the board came up with a decision on how to tackle a solution for the defined contribution plan. Were any decisions made in determining the solution for the defined contribution plan used? Or were any decisions made that would benefit the defined benefit plan?
Discussion was about?
You know, I, I don't have the history on this. Maybe I can turn that back to Jerry or Paula.
One more time with the question? I'm sorry, Mike.
What, when the solutions to addressing the defined contribution plans were being discussed, were any decisions made in which route to go, such as this hybrid plan? Were any decisions, did, did the, the current state of the defined benefit plan, were any of those issues used to help determine what solution would be arrived at?
Okay, no.
No, okay.
The hybrid plan was looked at as exclusive. One thing that we did do in, in looking at the hybrid plan was to ensure that it wasn't an enhancement to the DB plan, to the current DB plan. So we didn't want to, it was simply to create a floor and therefore not to create a plan that was better than what was offered in the old DB plan.
Right, and to be clear, I'm not referring to the benefits offered to the defined benefit members.
Okay.
I'm referring to the viability of the defined benefit plan.
Also.
Does this hybrid plan ensure the viability, or does it make the viability of the defined benefit plan any better?
If it does, it's coincidence. It's not, it wasn't an intention, it wasn't a goal, that we make the DB plan any more or less viable as a result of the creation of the hybrid plan.
When you say coincidence, do you mean it will or it will not benefit?
It may or may not. It wasn't part of the factors that we considered.
So having, having additional contributors for a longer period of time into a combined plan doesn't benefit the defined benefit plan?
The, the fact that the new hybrid plan has a less enhanced benefit than the DC, than the, than the old DB plan, and there are more contributors, and they are all contributing a different, or they all are contributing, it has the coincidence of making it, a little, you know, has the coincidence of making the security ratio look better. But as we saw in the numbers, it also has the effect of making the unfunded liability greater. So it wasn't, you know, that wasn't a factor that we looked at. If it does happen, if it, if that's the result of, of the analysis of the math that comes from it, then, then it is. But it wasn't something that we planned. In other words, we didn't say, okay, how can we make the DB plan more solid? And therefore created the hybrid plan on that.
May I add something, Senator? You know, from, I, I came in late. I've just been in the trustees a couple of years now. But my, my observations were, were this, to answer your question. One is, is certainly the board had to discuss the hybrid plan in term, or whatever solutions we were looking at at the time, in the context of the DB plan. The DB plan's the elephant in the room. At twenty-four point nine percent contribution rate, you can't ignore that. So that's, that's number one. So certainly, many of our discussions about the costs, overall costs to the government were shaped by the fact that we already have to pay twenty-five percent, the government already has to allocate twenty-five percent of whatever they're going to contribute towards retirement to the, to the DB plan's side. And then, yeah, so I, I think contextually, it had to always be there. The other side, I think it goes to Senator San Nicholas's point, and that is, is that, you know, we also learned from the current DB plan. You know, the DB plan is an example of how you can create a one point five million dollar unfunded liability with good intentions and with decisions along the way. So I think discussions that I was part of with, with this board related to, you know, what are the controls that we're going to have on the hybrid plan? What are the things that, you know, we can address this issue? One of the guiding principles we use that you have to pay for the benefits that, you know, we're going to receive. Those were all guiding principles that came out of, you know, the experiences that the Government of Guam has had with the, the old defined benefit plans that, that are in place now.
I guess, you know, one of the things that comes to mind is during the public hearing, there was several references to a plan in perpetuity, right? This, this hybrid plan would create that, right? That it's a continuously, it, it doesn't have a lifespan, right? That's what they were referring to. And my concern is that you wouldn't have that unless you took the DC members and rolled it into this hybrid plan, into the DB plan. The DB plan would not have that plan in perpetuity, right?
That's correct.
Unless this hybrid plan was somehow, took those high number of DC members and rolled them into this hybrid plan to include the DB member plan.
That's correct. But there will be a last person in the DB plan paid at some point in the future, right? So that plan does have a finite life. The old DB plan has a finite life. The plan in perpetuity will transition from the old, well, the combination of the old DB plus the new hybrid folks, and it'll become ultimately just the new hybrid folks, right? So when we speak in terms of the hybrid plan and calling it a plan in perpetuity, it's also a plan in transition where the old DB members, there's going to be at one point one day, one last person who receives one last paycheck.
Right, but, but, but other than the one percent mandatory contribution to the four fifty-seven plan, it really is just a defined benefit plan.
Yeah.
So we're just creating a, a plan in perpetuity with another defined benefit plan.
That's correct. But my point is, is that it isn't, it isn't part, I mean, it, it's not improving the solvency of the DB, the old DB. I mean, it's a plan onto itself. The, the hybrid plan becomes a plan onto itself. And you're right, there is a, there is a significant DB portion, and I think we can agree to that in the hybrid plan, and a one percent contribution to a four fifty-seven. And, you know, at the end of the day, if it's, if it's the government, the employer's intention to enhance that to a two percent maybe contribution on the. to enhance that to a 2% maybe contribution on the 457, that's, you know, that, you know, we're not opposed to that necessarily. When we were, you know, what we haven't focused on a lot in discussing all the different, either descriptives or the different options, is the fact that we've also looked at this in terms of affordability, because there was a time when the government was looking at doing things like extending the amortization to improve government affordability in general, when we, there was a cash flow crunch. Or doing things with the retirement fund, opting to potentially borrow money from the retirement fund to fund government operations. I mean, we were looking at creating options that took into account the fact that, you know, as, as much as we'd like to create a great plan with all these, with all the different bells and whistles, it, we can't do it if we can't afford it. And so in creating the, the hybrid plan and looking at the different options, we were simply looking at trying to create one that balanced the best benefits relative to the other options at the most affordable rate, the most affordable cost.
And just, just going back, you know, the, I'm looking at the Milliman report that has a certain section on page two that references the 4,999 DC participants included in the study, in that their DC balances would, would be, $42.7 million would be transferred. This is what you're referring to as the increase of the security ratio, right?
I believe so. I'm, I'm trying to find what page.
Oh, it's, it's.
Is that the law enforcement?
Yeah, October 20th. The last. Okay, okay. This is, okay, this has to do with law enforcement.
Oh, I, I know it has to do with law enforcement, but it's.
No, no, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to find which one.
Yeah, page two?
Okay, got it, got it.
It's, the title is, "Study of Proposed Hybrid Plan With Actuarial Costs."
Yes, sir.
So I just want to go back to when you had referenced that any benefit would have been coincidental, surely the $42.7 million added to the, the security, this would improve the security ratio. This is what you were referring to, right?
Yes, yeah. The additional, absolutely. I mean, adding additional assets to the fund and reopening it, so to speak, so you have new contributors contributing to the fund.
Yeah.
Has the effect of helping it.
Right. Okay, so I, so I guess the short answer is, yes, it wasn't the intent, but it did. It, it does have a benefit.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. So you had mentioned earlier too, when you were, you were answering one of the questions regarding the cost, the, when you were determining the solutions that were viable, you're looking at the total cost to the government. I don't have your presentation here in front of me, but there was a question that I had during the, the committee as a whole, as to why the cost to administer the fund was used for the hybrid plan, whereas the contribution to the government of 5% was used in the analysis. So we use, when examining the current DC plan, we use 5% contribution to the government as the cost to the government.
The 5% contribution on, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand the question.
Sure. So in the analysis of the, of all the plans and all of the different options, you had a matrix that showed the current DC plan, the DC plan plus social security.
Okay.
The hybrid plan, and in that analysis, in that matrix, you used the cost to administer the fund for the hybrid plan, but you used the government's contribution to the DC plan and the DC plan plus social security.
Right.
Why wouldn't you just use the plant, the cost to administer the plan as opposed to the contribution?
So the cost to administer a DB plan is different than the cost, the contribution rate to the DC side, right? Simply put, it's just more costly, well, the, the 5% contribution on the DC side is a 5% employer match that goes directly to the employee and helps their fund balance grow. In exchange for that, the, the employer caps its liability and says, what you get at the end of your working career is whatever is in the balance. Administrative costs are paid for separately. Administrative costs include the cost to send out statements and do all that stuff. But the government's share, the government's contribution, is that 5% to the employee. On the DB side, the mechanics and the logistics are different, and overall, it's cheaper because the employee, or, I'm sorry, while the employee doesn't get the statements, it doesn't get any of that stuff that they, that they do under DC side. So the overall costs are a little less. In addition to that, the benefit payouts are also different, whereas the, the benefit is calculated as a percentage of something, in this case, the three highest salaries at the end of the, the term. So in comparing the cost, and it was 1.84% for the hybrid and the 5% for the DC, they're both looked at in terms of cost to the employer, but what makes up those costs are different. And the, the limits of liability are also different, as, as, you know, on the DB side, you have a pension for your, for life, and plus 60% on survivors and so on. So the benefits are different and the costs are different, and so you can't compare, you can't use that same percentage.
Yeah, but I guess my concern was that it painted a, it painted a picture as though the actual contribution that the government was making towards, you know, the, the 29% tile, right, that we're talking about, was lower. In actuality, they're still contributing that 5% on top of the cost that was indicated to administer the plan.
So then the, the cost you're referring to, the, with the 1.84, what that number represents is if you look at all the members that we expected to be in the hybrid plan, and we project out their benefits to when they retire and paid for their lifetime, and we calculate the amount of money it's going to take to provide those benefits, net of the nine and a half percent that the employee is contributing, it would leave, it would require 1.8% of pay from the government to provide those future benefits. Now, in addition to that, there's the unfunded liability that if members transfer over, they're going to create an unfunded liability. The cost of that will vary depending on how many people transfer over, but that's around 3% to 5% of pay in addition to the 1.84.
Right.
So.
And I guess that's what I was getting at, was that, that the analysis was painted in such a picture that it did not accurately reflect that that 5% is still being contributed. Now, I, I understand that when the unfunded liability is paid off, that, that goes away permanent, permanently, right? And now it's truly just that 1.84%. But for the next 30 years, or however it takes, right? That, that, so we need to adjust that to make sure it accurately reflects the government's costs, because what was portrayed in the matrix was that, that 5% somehow vanished, but it, it truly is still there.
Well, if, if, the purpose of that exhibit was to show what the cost is for a new employee, so somebody that comes into the plan next year, what is going to be the cost for that, that one employee? Under the DC plan, it's easy, it's going to be 5%. That's what the government pays. In the hybrid plan, a new employee comes in, they're not bringing any unfunded liability with them, they don't have any prior service, so the cost for that new employee for the government is going to be, we estimate, 1.8%. And so that's the long-term cost of the hybrid plan. You have this group that's going to be transferring over, which is going to create the unfunded liability, so there's, for the next 17 years until the unfunded liability's paid off, it's going to be an additional 3% to 5% on top of that.
Right, and I think that, just so that we're doing apples to apples, that it should accurately reflect, or somehow in the assumption side, you know, with an asterisk, say, you know, explain that, because it, to the average person reading it, they, they just, they would agree with your summation that it costs less, but truly, they don't understand that there is an additional 5% for those participants that transfer over. And going forward, okay, new employees, we, we understand that. Going back to the Milliman report real quick, and then I'll, I'll let the floor go to someone else. Regarding the costs, you know, the, I've noticed that a lot of the Milliman reports are referring to actuarial evaluations as of September 20, September 30th, 2013. Is there a reason why we're not using current data? Because the assumptions specifically are made in every report that cite that these numbers are based on these, these numbers, right? So changes in the assumption, changes in the cost, you know, will not reflect that. And the, the plan outcomes and the projections would be different. So is there a reason why we're not using whatever current data exists now, or is that the most current data?
That was the most current data for the, the DB population. We did collect, in some of the later reports, we were able to get updated census data. Actually, that was still as of October as well. So all the census data we had was as of that time, and, and we collect the census data on September 30th of each year. And so at the time of those reports, we didn't have the updated census data.
Okay, so, so the, the census data is available on September, so as of October 20th of this report, it was not available, or it wasn't in some fashion that you could use to do the analysis?
That's right. It takes a few months to get the data.
Okay, yeah, all right. Okay, those are all the questions I have for now, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, it, it takes a while. I mean, even Mr. Vloss at the other end of the table knows I've been calling him for the last several days about the end of the fiscal year report that's starting to come out. So it's, I just want to get a couple of things clear. The 24% that we're paying for the unfunded liability, even if we didn't pass the hybrid plan and we left the DC alone, if we did nothing, absolutely nothing, we didn't change any law, the government of Guam would have to continue to pay the 24% to pay down the unfunded liability. Is that correct?
On a sliding scale.
Yeah, but, but I mean, it would still have something that have to, they, they would still be paying down something regardless of whether or not we passed a DB plan, whatever.
That's correct.
For 17 years.
17 years until 2031. And that's why you're insistent that there's no extension of the amortization period, correct?
Yeah, so the, the extension of the amortization period, given our current, the fund's current complexion, 50% or so security ratio, you know, ballpark figures, we're, our concern is that it makes us vulnerable to market fluctuations, particularly negative market fluctuations, where you can get to a point where the fund balance gets so eroded that no rate of return is going to be sufficient to get it growing again, because you're needing to withdraw money to make benefit payments, and, and so you just create this downward spiral. Stretching it out, because we are 50% funded, makes us very vulnerable for those negative market fluctuations.
Yeah, I, I understand. I, I'm just trying to dispel a misconception in the community.
Right.
And I think Speaker Joe Teague cleared it up for me one time when he said, "Look at your paycheck and tell me where 24% is being taken out of a DC member's paycheck to pay down the unfunded liability."
You're correct.
It's not.
No, it's a government contribution.
Unfortunately, the one that's paying for it is you and you, the, the taxpayers. There, there's nothing being taken out, so there, there, it's not costing. I mean, if the government folded today, there would, there, somehow they'd have, I mean, there'd be 12,000 people out there without a retirement fund. I mean, that's happening in Detroit and a couple of other places, where they have these DB plans that they're not being able to pay down.
Right.
And I think I'd like to address one other thing. The 11.4% for the, the cost of, 11.3% operation of the, the hybrid plan, that's how much you figure it would, it would cost to put this program together, right?
Right, that's the total cost, employer and employee.
And that's, that's the, and I know that the speaker had an earlier question about why, why is the employee being made to pay 9.5%? There is no magic in the decision for 9.5, correct? I mean, it's.
No, it's just designed to be comparable to the current DB.
I, I understand, but if any of us are concerned about the amount that's being taken out of the employee's paycheck, we can take this down and say that the employee contribution will remain at 5%, but the government will pick up the 6.34. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
And so if any member here wants to increase our contribution, we, we can, but I want to thank the retirement fund for at least saying, as Dave John puts it, in the private sector, the employees are contributing, what, 10 and a half?
Yeah.
Yeah.
6.2.
10 and a half, and we're asking the new hybrid employees to pay 9.5, and we're balking at the thought of that increase, but we don't need to if we're willing to take it out of the taxpayers' pockets and lower that amount, but your recommendation to us is 9.5 from them, and the 1.84 will be the.
Well, sorry. Yeah, the, I think that the charge for, for us, for me at least, was to, when designing this plan, was to make it cost neutral, keep it the cost similar to what the current costs are. And we looked at other plans, we looked at the cash balance plans, we looked at enhancing the DC plan, but as you heard, to be an effective DC plan, you need to double the contribution rates. You need to have 20% going into the accounts. And doing that's not going to be cost neutral. If you add 5% more to DC members, you're not, costs are going to go up. So the charge was to try to make it cost neutral, and, and the hybrid, to make it cost neutral required the nine and a half percent from the employee.
And as to the 24% to pay down the unfunded liability until people retire, we really only have to look to the north of us, at Northern Marianas, where they've had to cut back on the employees' benefits to try to make ends meet, and they now have a receiver that's trying to recoup money from investors and advisors for what happened to the plan up there, and, but it's, the, the obligation to the DB retirees up there continues to exist, and the 24% here continues to exist until we, on the sliding scale, pay it down by 2031 and hopefully don't have anything else, and hopefully, whatever plan we pass doesn't create a whole new different one. But this misconception in the community that we're putting this on the backs of the, the DB employees, well, there's one comment that keeps coming at me about the fact that I'm putting this on the back of the, the DB employees and, and under, you know, threatening the, we will continue, even if we don't pass this, we have a continuing obligation to pay this 24%, and hopefully it keeps going down in the years ahead, to pay this down, because there are many people who are on the DB plan, and until that last one checks out, we're going to continue to have to, to pay that, because we've made the obligation, there really isn't any place where that money is saved. Okay, I just wanted to get that clarification. Go ahead, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, on, on the subject, because this was really bothering me also, was why are we contributing 5% now, matching 5% to the employees, and then we're going to drop that down to 1.8, and we're going to put more on the backs of the employees? But now my understanding is that that 3.2% is to pay the $100 million unfunded liability portion. So we are putting this into the, the defined benefit, we are adding it to the backs of the defined benefit, but we're paying for it with that 3.2%, and we're having the current employees in the DC plan, for lack of a better word, eat it by increasing their contribution rate instead. And if we don't make the employees on the DC plan eat it, and we match it the same way we're matching the DC plan, then the total government contribution's going to go from 5% in the current DC to 8.2% in the hybrid. Could I just give verbal confirmation on all that?
That, that's correct.
That's all correct?
Yep, that's all correct.
Okay, okay. So the reason why we're only able to do 1.8 in the hybrid is because we need to pay 3.2 in to make up for the $100 million unfunded liability?
That's correct.
Okay.
Round numbers.
For, for current members?
Yeah. It depends on how many transfer over, so it could be 3.2, it could be more, it could be less, but that's approximately correct.
For the current, for the current employees?
Right.
But now all new employees will only be. But now all new employees will only be getting a 1.8% government match. So we're technically reducing government benefits to all new hires.
The government contribution towards their benefit.
That's right. My other question I had was, you know, in the...also in the Milliman report, because one of the questions I asked was, instead of using a 7% assumption, we used a 5% assumption. And one of the statements here, and it's underlined, is that the assumption is not a reasonable investment return for the DB and the hybrid plans. Now, and that the proper amount would be 7% for the assumption. Now, I can understand why that would be a good, a proper assumption today, but I was also a history major at UOG. What was the assumption assumed rate back in 1995? 1995 and 1998? Yeah.
Yes, sir. Do I have to actuarial or...
Yeah, so it does...it could go down. The assumptive rate could decline depending on what actual is actually coming in.
Sure, yeah. We look at that each year to see if it's a reasonable assumption.
Okay. And so, I mean, so going forward, because one of the things that everyone in the investment industry will agree on is that past performance is never indicative of future results. So assuming that our returns in the hybrid plan, the returns in the market in general, trend downwards further than the 7% assumption that we're looking at today could be too optimistic if it trends lower going forward and we will have an even higher government contribution that would need to go in in order to make up for the difference.
Yeah, that's...that could happen.
Okay. Now, and one of the things that I've learned over the course of this dialogue, and I really appreciate it, is that I would always refer to that as unfunded liability, but it technically isn't because we're going to be funding it, but it's a funded liability. If we...if the rates of return drop, we're going to have to...it's going to be a funded liability that we're going to have to pay. Currently funded...
(inaudible).
Yeah. Well, semantics, right? Okay. And so, and this is all, again, Mr. Chairman, where I look at the whole thing and I'm saying to myself, you know, are we...is this really the right direction for us to be moving in with respect to the retirement system? Because, you know, the first thing I think of when we're creating a retirement plan is what are we creating for our new employees? And then when I look at the situation that we're trying to resolve, and I really respect all the work you guys have put into this, because I think what we're trying to do here is we're really trying to fix the shortfall that has manifested itself in all of these DC plan employees that we're trying to basically salvage, at least the 5,000 of them. Because seven of the 5,000...of two...there's a total of 7,000. 2,000 are okay, 5,000 are not. And so we're trying to come up with a way to fix the 5,000. My only concern is that in fixing the 5,000, are we going to be shortchanging every other new hire thereafter? And technically, we will be because our government contribution is going to be lesser and their employee contribution is going to be higher. So every new employee is going to be...is going to be getting less of a government contribution rate if we go with this hybrid plan. So that's what concerns me about moving...I'm sorry, jump at any time if you think what I'm saying is incorrect.
You know, I'm going to make a...just a comment, but you are correct in terms of those numbers, Senator. But also, though, notwithstanding the reduction in the government contribution rate for those employees, the benefit at the end of their career is the same. So they will still get...the new employees who start today will still get the 1.75% of their three highest paid salaries. Those that are currently employed, if this hybrid plan passes, when they turn 65 will also still get the 3%. So the benefit is the same, notwithstanding the fact that the government contribution has been reduced. So all we've done really is reduce the cost.
And so is their contribution the same? So the cost to them is the same as well as the benefits are the same?
Correct.
And the benefits are enhanced, as we discussed, from whatever we're going to see on the DC.
The benefits will be the same, but they would be paying for their benefit as opposed to getting a government match to pay for their benefit?
Everybody's going to pay the 10 and 1/2.
Yeah, everybody's going to pay the 10 and 1/2.
Yeah, so what I'm getting at is that if they're a new hire...see, right now, when we hire an employee, they put in 5%, the government puts in 5%. Once we adopt this hybrid plan, every new employee we hire is only going to get 1.8% of a government contribution. And they're going to have to contribute the 9.5.
Right.
So they're going to have to contribute more and their government benefit, their government contribution's going to be less. So when we adopt this, and just so that it's on the table, every single new employee of the government of Guam is going to be getting less of a government benefit with respect to the contribution rate that goes into their retirement plan. That's clear.
No, I don't...
Yeah, I don't think so either because the benefits are the same. See, I think...
And the cost to them is the same.
Yeah. So you're looking at it like a DC plan where the 5%, the 5% at the end of your career...I'm sorry. You get...you get whatever's there plus earnings. Whereas in the DB side, the government contractually obligates itself to pay you an annuity based on a schedule for the rest of your life. So regardless of what it costs, regardless of what the earnings are, regardless of...all for the employee, they know they put in 9 and 1/2, 10 and 1/2% and the government contributes X. And whatever that X is, is going to result in a benefit schedule at the end of their term.
I understand all that, but I think...I don't mean to be argumentative, but I really must disagree. What we're basically saying is that if the contribution is A and the benefit is B, how much they can...what I'm talking about is that the government's amount is supposed to be contributing the ultimate benefit. Right now, the government's contribution for the benefit of the employee is 5%. When we adopt this hybrid plan, the government's contribution for the benefit of the employee is going to go down to 1.8%. So that employee's going to get the same benefit as every other employer, you know, the 9.5, but they're going to be paying for it. The government's not going to be...not going to be contributing to it as an employer.
You know, I...
So the benefits...so the employee benefit from the government, when we adopt this hybrid plan, is going to go down, the benefit of how much the government contributes to their retirement when they actually retire. Their benefit...the benefit of what their retirement is, is not going to go down, but they're going to be the ones to have paid for that more than the government would have been the one to have paid for that. In terms of its matching.
I don't think you're saying anything wrong. I just...I think I changed the context of how you're saying it.
Yeah.
Because we're going to disagree, I think.
The reason why I want to make it clear is because, you know, it's a benefit for the employees.
Yes, it is.
You know, it's like saying...it's like saying we're going to reduce the amount that we contribute to their health insurance and they're going to pay more, but they're getting the same health insurance coverage, so the benefit's the same. But that's not the case, you know? So same goes for the retirement. If we're contributing less on the retirement side, they may still be getting the same thing at the end of the day, but the benefit from the government is lower.
That's correct, but it'll vary based on individuals. The 5% defined contribution is much more valuable to someone in their 20s and 30s. When they have 30 or 40 years, they can invest the money than it is to a 60-year-old person that's newly hired. So on an individual-by-individual basis, some people may be better off with the 1.8% cost because that's an average cost overall employees. But if they're hired 10 years before retirement and they work 10 years, they'll get a much more valuable benefit than the 1.8. But you're correct, overall, the average is 1.8%, which is less than the 5% for the DC.
So if the actuarial tables show a decline in the markets going forward, we're still going to have to make up for that difference and fund that with increasing government contributions?
That's correct. If the investment earnings are not 7%, then future costs will be higher.
And so, and this takes me back to kind of what I talked about earlier, about how I really would like to understand, and if somebody can help me understand. Like, for example, maybe a hybrid plan for new employees has a 5% government contribution rate. And whatever the amount needs to be for the employees, I can probably accept that for new employees. And then we go in and we fix the problems of the existing DC members by coming up with a solution there. But my question is, why do we...why are we going with the one-size-fits-all solution that for at least new employees is going to result in a reduced rate of government contribution when we could probably go in and address these individual groups that are affected with different solutions? I mean, has that ever been explored by the fund?
Well, I think that the thinking, at least on my part, I can't speak for the fund as a whole, but for me and the work that I do, the first task was to look at the current DC people and try to fix something for that group. And since they've already accrued their benefits, they already have a DC account balance, without just sending more money into their account balances, you really can't do anything to enhance their benefits. And so for that particular group, we thought a hybrid approach would work that provides a kind of a floor DB benefit and a mechanism for them to save additional money to get higher benefits. Going forward, looking at new employees and seeing what's happening around in other states, other cities, we see the hybrid approach where there is a sort of a floor DB benefit that's provided with chances for additional savings through the 457 plan. And so, at least from my perspective, that design, I believe, worked for both existing employees and future employees. The cost for future employees, it'd be nice to have, design a plan where you can have 5% coming from the employer, 9 and 1/2 from the employee. That would be, I think, a sufficient benefit. But we were hampered in trying to come up with something that was cost neutral and didn't break the bank.
Now, for me, what I'm trying to also reconcile, and I appreciate that, what I'm trying to also reconcile is just philosophically how this really all...what this all really means. And so, for example, I mean, let's say we're talking about an employee who converted from the defined benefit to defined contribution. They withdrew their balance to go and build a house, and now they can't retire. Now, what we're trying to do is we're trying...now what we're going to do if we adopt this hybrid is we're going to increase the employee contributions for everybody so that that person can retire and we're basically going to subsidize that person's decision to withdraw their money and buy their house.
Actually, in the hybrid plan, if someone that took a withdrawal, they will not get credit for that service that they took the withdrawal for.
Okay. So then what we're putting on the table and totally clarifying is, if you guys screwed it up somehow, this is not going to save you.
Unless they pay it back.
Unless they pay it back.
Right.
Are they going to have to pay it back with the assumed rate of interest or...
There's a statutory interest rate that's...
That they're going to have to also pay back as well?
Right, yeah.
As compounded?
Yes.
So they did that 20 years ago at 4% compounded, you're looking at almost twice as much paying back. If they had like 150,000, they'd have to pay back 300,000 or this plan's not going to save them.
More than twice.
Yeah, more than twice as much. And that just all needs to be very clear because there's a lot of employees out there who are like, you know, they're saying, "Oh, I can't retire and why aren't you doing this to save me?" And I'm saying, "What exactly happened?" And then they tell me the story of how they withdrew and I'm like, "Well, that's why this needs to be clarified. Are we subsidizing those people or are we not?" And the answer is, no. If you withdrew it, you're still not going to be saved with this hybrid plan. So that basically takes off the first people on the list here of who we're trying to save, right, with this hybrid. So now we're basically talking about the DC plan employees who...whose contribution rates were too low and who were perhaps in default options that stagnated their returns that we now want to still at least give the opportunity to retire. And so what are the...and that's why I would like to know what the numbers are for these. Well, yeah, 100 million is basically the unfunded liability that we're going to tack on to provide the solution. That 100 million is how much we need to spend in order to rescue that one group? We basically...we're basically 100 million short on all these accounts?
Yeah, well, the 100 million short, it's due to several causes. One can be because of poor investment earnings, also just the inadequacy of the 10% contributions coming in, and then also the age of the person. If they're close to retirement, then there's a higher liability for the retirement benefit going forward. So all of those factor into the 100 million.
So the current DC employees who are doing okay, if they convert to the hybrid, they're going to get credit into their 457s and all those kinds of things. So we're going to try and make them whole somehow. So right now, then, basically, we're just...we're just trying to deal with this one group. And what we're trying to do in dealing with them is give them a percentage of their income as a retirement. Right? So we're not trying to create...we're really not trying to give them some kind of like social safety net. We're trying to give them the retirement that they would have had if they were still in the defined benefit plan, more or less. We're basically...
It's a lower benefit.
A lower benefit, but...
And one of the other differences between the hybrid and the old DB plan is with respect to early retirement. Under the hybrid plan, there's...you have to work till 65 to get the full benefits, whereas under the old DB plan, people could retire early...earlier and get full benefits.
So really, what we're trying to do here is turn back the clock back to 1995 to put...to allow all these employees to have been in a DB plan since 95 with those parameters. And it's going to cost us $100 million to do it.
Yeah, the concept is to provide a lower-level DB benefit, the floor DB benefit, and allow people that have done well in the market and then new employees and others that want to contribute more, give them an opportunity for an enhanced benefit by contributing money through the 457.
And the trade-off for us to turn back that clock is, the government will assume, will once again reassume the funded liability of any assumptions that are overly optimistic, whether it's longevity or expected rates of return?
Yeah, those can change and the idea or the role of the actuary is to make sure that they're not optimistic. It's the... And if you look, if you compare this fund with other states, we...the Milliman, my company, just did a survey of the 100 largest public pension funds, and the average assumed investment return in those funds is 7.75%. And I'll tell you, that's too high. And most actuaries will tell you that's too high. But there's 100 actuaries out there saying that that's a reasonable assumption, 7.75%.
Wow. So if we don't have you as our actuary, if the fund goes and finds a different actuary, we can throw this entire thing for a loop?
Yeah, right. You could...if you find another actuary that will say you're going to earn 8%, your costs will come down.
But Rich, are your actuarial investment rate is based on our experience?
It's based on our expectations of future investment returns and the asset allocation.
Right, exactly.
And, you know, it is healthy that we're having this actuarial discussion because in back in 1995, we do have testimony on the record from the actuary of the fund at the time that said that the DC plan as proposed was the right move for us to take. So, you know, I mean, and I guess there's a new investment term that we can all learn here today called actuarial risk, where depending on who your actuary is is going to determine whether or not you're going to be...
Senator, that's why, I mean, a lot of actuarial firms have bowed out of public sector DB or investment firms have bowed out of DB plans for governments because it's unlike the private sector where it has to be tied in to a certain rate. It's basically picked by the actuary and the government. But I think, you know, we're hitting this, we've been hitting the same discussion over and over and over again for the last six weeks. The piece that I just yet to have heard the discussion on is community risk, economic risk, and borrowing costs. We had the GIDEA forum here a couple of weeks ago, and we had the bond underwriters here. And I sat down, had breakfast with them, talked with them about bond underwriting risks. And I said, "So how would the bond markets look at this?" And so for the good side of it, so just so you know I'm not trying to weight it one-sided is, with Puerto Rico in the situation it's in, Guam's bonds are...the demand is hot, right? Because if we're triple tax exempt, it allows for each state to be able to diversify their risk within the pools of those individual mutual funds. The demand's not going away anytime soon. So leave that there. But when the bond underwriters and the rating agencies look at Guam and they see that we're 50% funded, flags just go...you know, they just go flying up. What's kept us in the situation where we're able to get the ratings that we have right now is next to it, there's an asterisk, that the government of Guam Retirement Fund has got us under control, that we're funding this thing and it's going to be paid off by 2031. So then it just kind of sits there as a cautionary tale, but it doesn't necessarily negatively affect our bond underwriting. It doesn't negatively affect our borrowing costs. But according to these guys, you open this thing back up, that goes away. So yes, the demand will still be there for our bonds, but the question is, will they still remain investment grade? And if they're not investment grade, then what are we talking about? What's the interest rate risk? None of this is... None of this has been looked at. So, what's that going to cost in borrowing costs? Is the 1.8% going to look like a small number compared to the new borrowing cost? Not to mention, we just borrowed a half a billion dollars from the markets. We didn't tell them, we were looking at this. What's that going to affect our future, you know, how are they going to look at us in the future? Are we somebody that we can take for, is the government of Guam someone you could take on their word? I mean, if I were to borrow money from a bank and then find out afterwards and tell them, "Well, I had this debt I forgot I was going to tell you about," I don't think the bank would be real happy. So, from a borrowing cost, what's it going to affect us? And it's not going to be small change, but the amount of money we've been borrowing. The bigger problem with going back to a defined benefit plan is an inefficient workforce. We're going to go back to the days where you're a private sector teacher or a public sector teacher, a private sector nurse or a public sector nurse. To move back and forth through the computations, Rich maybe can run it for you. You have somebody who works for the government between age 20 and 30, and they compute in this plan. Then they decide to shift over to a private sector, now they're in Social Security. It's going to be 1.75 times the 10 years of service they had in their 20s when they weren't making squat, and that's what's going to be the benefit in this. Now, they're going to shift over to Social Security system in the private sector, and they're going to get partial benefits over there. So, the problem is that you have, you're going to run with two systems again, and you're going to lock people in place where they can't move back and forth. And it hurts private sector, and it hurts public sector, and more importantly, it hurts the workers that are in there. How you quantify it, I don't know, but none of the studies have been done. I thought when we, when we were passing bills, we're supposed to do financial analysis of how it's going to affect the overall economy. I've yet to hear that at all. And these are big things. So, I mean, we're going back, and not on top of all that, we're going to go back to a system where we don't know what the future liability is going to hold, we don't know where mortality rates are going to go, and our little island, which is basically on a two-legged economy of government spending and tourism spending, is going to have to take on this risk again. I don't understand why we're not moving towards Social Security for, and then it gets back to, I think you and Dave actually hit it, that we're trying to solve everything with one solution, instead of looking at it where we've got employees going forward, let's create the best plan going forward. I would advocate that it would be Social Security plus a DC plan. And I don't, best plan, you could quantify best in a number of ways, but a plan that would work for the community, work for the stakeholders, work for the taxpayers, work for the employee, they can now go from private to public, public to private, just like they're moving from one company to the other, that solves things going forward. Simple. We're not in the risk of taking all this liability on our little government, on our little island. We're not trying to pretend that we know what the future's going to hold for mortality, and it's simpler. We're not sitting here with all this, this skill set here, taking time out of the day, trying to be, having the island be retirement experts for our employees. And this is, we're employer right now, we're not the government. We're acting as the employer right now. Because if we were acting as a government, then we'd be talking about private sector workers, too. This discussion isn't as a government, this discussion is as an employer. And so, we don't, we have other things to do other than try to be retirement experts. So, you can push this off on Social Security plus a DC plan going forward, and then you tie back to what Senator St. Nicholas is saying. How do you solve the situation for those going backwards? But by trying to take these two things and putting them into place where you're trying to solve them all under one guise, then it becomes, you know, pretty complicated. And I, and I sound like I'm just a critical jerk, but I do, I appreciate all the work they've been doing, and I, and I know what they've been up to, and it's not easy. So, I'm not, I'm trying to put my, my two cents out there without being a jerk, but going forward, if you disconnect the workforce again, it just doesn't end well. I mean, you're going to have teachers that can't go back and forth, you're going to have nurses that can't go back and forth, you're going to have skill sets. I mean, how many people do you have, that, one of the things, you look at the government's payroll schedules, or pay scales, not schedules, when they're younger, typically, a government worker's making a little bit more money than they would in the private sector. But as they get to middle and high level within the agency levels, they can make a lot more money on the outside, and now they're tied into a benefit schedule, they can't move back and forth. So, while you, it'll benefit some people, it is not good for the economy. And we haven't talked about quantifying it, we haven't talked about borrowing costs, we haven't talked about any of that. We're just talking about this 1.8%, you know, this, this number out here. And we're not talking about the overall bigger costs and what they are. I just would like to see some discussion on that. Thank you.
And just to clarify, can I just ask one question real quick, Mr. Chairman? Is this hybrid plan being designed as a pay-as-you-go system? Are we, is it going to be like Social Security where we need new members to come in and fund it? Or are we designing it where it's self-contained and everybody's pretty much funding themselves?
It's self-contained.
So, we don't need to include new employees into this system? We can basically just roll this out, tag on the extra 100 million, 3.2% increase on the, on the government contribution side to pay that down, and allow for whoever's in there to take the rescue option, but we don't need to actually roll it out for new employees? We can, we can actually go down, go down the path of a DC plus Social Security for our new employees?
Yeah, that's a possibility.
Okay, and that's very important for us to know, because since this is not a pay-as-you-go system, then maybe we can, we can look, we can bifurcate the two, the two types of people that we're trying to help here. We're talking about new employees, and we're talking about the ones that we're trying to come to the rescue of because of the rollout, growing pains that we have at the DC plan. So, Mr. Chairman, I would like to proffer that we seriously consider perhaps the option of containing this to the existing and considering a new employee system that is DC plus Social Security, because that's, that would be somewhere, somewhere down the middle of the road. That way, also, we would set a finite time limit on the, on this hybrid portion, because that way, by not including new employees, this too will sunset. And that would, that would also go to help address the bond issue and the debt issue, because we would be able to put a double asterisk on those that we've converted into this hybrid program and say, old plan, sunsets in 17 years, hybrid plan, sunsets in however long the life expectancy is of the youngest member, and everyone else is DC plus Social Security. So, granted, we're going to be creating three different things to administer, but we aren't going to be creating a perpetually new DB plan that, that won't sunset. I think that that's something that we should seriously, seriously have a discussion on, Mr. Chairman.
I think you corrected the very beginning that this is only going to be the first of a series, and I don't know about poor Rich, whether or not he's flying back and forth for this, for this discussion. But the thing is, is that we're going to have to figure out, address some of those issues that, and I'm going to have to ask you guys to quantify some of that for us, and, and to quantify how much that 5% is. I know that David Johnson's saying I shouldn't be so fixed on this, but how much if we wanted to pay that additional 5%? But we've been joined by the judiciary, and before we have our next discussion, I just like, and I know they have two different points of view, so I want to hear both points of view on this. Chris and I had spoken about, and I said, "The old DB is never coming back." Let's just, but if, but we'll let his honor speak first, because I want you to keep your job.
No.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The only thing, again, you know, I, of course, came into the tail end, but, I mean, one of the things that, that my understanding is, is being considered, is if the government, instead of reducing it, pays up the 5%, maintains its 5%, then it seems to me that, as far as bondholders are concerned, there's going to be two things that, that look good to them. Number one, the capitalization as, as what's represented is going to increase, because if you roll over the, the DC people into the plan, it's going to be above 50%, because the DC people are bringing, even though they're bringing 100 million in liabilities, are bringing much more in assets. So, the capitalization's going to increase, so it's going to see an increase of the capitalization. Number two, it's going to see a decrease in the term to pay off the undercapitalization, because under the proposed plan, which was 1.8%, the capitalization will be paid off in the same amount of time, that's 2031. If the government, and I agree, the government should increase its percentage, if it maintains the same cost that it's paying now, the 5%, it's going to decrease the term to pay off that undercapitalization. So, that's going to be attractive in terms of an asterisk to the bondholders. Again, I think, as Senator St. Nicholas had talked about, about whether new employees should be put into the Social Security, a couple of things need to be considered. Number one, I think that's a viable option, but, but it's an option that can't be considered until, until we get that permission from the government, and maybe as soon as the permission, I, I don't disagree that the government shouldn't try and continue to get that option. And maybe in the meantime, like, like we said, you can talk about what would happen if we're able to get that option for new employees. But we talked about some of the effects that that option would have even on current employees who've been working for 20 years, and, and the penalty that they'll have to pay. I think one item that I spoke about, and actually, I think I might have even been in error, that might be critical for us to think about in, in Social Security, is for spouses. The penalty to spouses if they get a portion of the benefits of their deceased government worker, I think there's a 60% penalty or something like that. And so, maybe something has to be thought about in terms of a lump sum payment at that point in time, because then it'll only have an effect on one year for the spouse. And that was just the other issue I had thought about with respect to how the benefit is. I mean, you're right, there has to be, we have to make sure, as we roll it out, that we cover all the contingencies that may take effect. And, and whether or not it's beneficial for new employees to be in the Social Security plus the DB, you know, a 6.2 plus, plus whatever portion they're going to require, if it's, if it's, if it's the maximum of 5% matching, that's 11.2, I guess, for each, at least under the current rates, right, for each of the employees. And those are just kind of a couple of the, the things I, I just had for now.
Mr. Patassi?
Just, I know that some of the...
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker.
The Justice has had some other concerns, and I think it's important that I get all three branches on.
Sure.
And so, I, I know that the Justice, though he wasn't a formal letter, the Chief Justice did have some concerns, and if you could just enunciate that for us today, so we can at least include that in the back of our mind of how to address some of the issues the judiciary handles.
Sure, just a clarification and a qualification. I'm here representing myself as a government employee and a DC member. I have had discussions with other members of the judiciary, including the Chief Justice, and while they may share some concerns that are similar to mine, you know, I'm representing myself here, because to me, what's been lost in all of this discussion is the perspective of a DC employee of the government of Guam. I feel like there's not equity in the bill that's being presented, I don't feel the benefits are enough, and I feel like there's a conflict of interest between the fund. And the qualification I want to make is, you know, I have the utmost respect for the fund and the Board of Directors, and you guys do a fantastic job managing the assets of the fund. But as a, as a DC member, I just don't feel like you should be, you know, supporting a bill that's going to put forth the benefits that are in it as it is today. You know, you can be neutral on it, but you're, you know, the way that I've seen this, and I've worked, you know, I worked in this project starting in 2010 when I was with the Office of Finance and Budget, and I worked on, on the original bill, and I worked on this on and off for four years, up until last November. And what I see today, as sitting on the sidelines, is I see the fund saying, "We will only move forward with this, with these sets of benefits and this structure." And then I see the legislature saying, "Well, we're not going to pass something that the fund doesn't support." So, you guys have each other's backs, but nobody's got the backs of the DC employee. And so, you know, sir, you know, so there's 8,000 of us that are in the government today, and we're the ones that are going to push this government forward for the next 30 years. And we've got a bill here that says, you know, "If you want a replacement income of X, 85%, you've got to work 49 years." Well, that's just not realistic. And is 85% the right replacement income? Maybe not. But certainly, 48.75% is not the right replacement income percentage either. And that, you would work 25 years in the government, and your replacement income would be 48.75%. And to me, that's just not right. There has to be a middle ground between that 85 and that 48. And, you know, and getting back to the conflict of interest, now, I know the Board is bound by, you know, a court order to protect the assets of the DB, so I don't know how you can, you know, come and represent DC members in good faith when you're bound to protect the DB assets, you know? And I'm not sure all what's in the court order, but you've got members of the DB plan that are going to sue whether the unfunded liability goes up a dollar or it goes up 100 million, you know? And I feel like, to say that we're only going to go up 100 million, and 100 million really, in my perspective, is only making up for the 20 years of underfunding the DC plan. That 3.8% or 3.2% that's going to be the unfunded liability of this new hybrid plan, it's really just making up for what David had talked about earlier. You know, you've got the DC, the DB members who have the Cadillac retirement plan, you've got the private sector who have the 6.2% from their employer, and the additional 3% to 4% for the 401K, and then you've got the DC members who are getting 1.8% with this new hybrid plan. And we're getting 5% now, which is still way below what everybody else is getting. So, in terms of equity, I don't see it. And, and, you know, what's the right number? What are the right set of benefits for this? I don't know. You know, in a, the current DC, I can retire at 59 with no penalty. In the hybrid bill, if I try to retire at 59, I'm going to get hit with penalties to be able to take that annuity at 59. So, at 59 and a half, I can draw my 401K, and I don't have to pay any penalties on that. But with this current bill, I do. So, there's certain things that I think should be looked at, and certain things that should be considered, to try and, you know, provide a better standard of living for the DC employees when they retire. I think asking a government employee to work 49 years, or even 40 years, I don't even know if that's realistic. And going, you know, and then the, the whole issue of portability, I think, is important. I think David brought up some good points about portability, because people today don't necessarily stay in their same job, but, you know, I'll leave that to the policymakers to decide what's, what's the best way to go about it. But I'd just like to see some more discussion about the employees and the, and the level of benefits provided in the bill, because I just don't, I don't think that it's, it's an appropriate level the way it's structured right now. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, give it to the other one, otherwise we...
You know, one of the other questions that I know was touched upon briefly, and it's referenced in the Milliman Report, specifically addressing, you know, one line of concern. When we talk about this unfunded liability, you know, a lot of the emphasis is that this unfunded liability just manifested itself, but in actuality, the legislature had a big part in contributing to the unfunded liabilities by laws that were passed that were unfunded, correct? That relied on the retirement board to figure it out. And, and really, the lawmakers were, are still to blame for a lot of that unfunded liability, or a portion of the unfunded liability. But in the Milliman Report, it specifically says, "If future payrolls do not increase by at least 3% per year, the contribution rates will increase." And so, I want to ask the Board a question in the sense that, what is your level of confidence that, one, the government is going to increase payrolls by 3% every year, or, two, not hit the retirement board with changes in the benefits that are going to affect that unfunded liability once again?
You know, two things. We can ask Rich what our experience has been so far. We haven't had a problem hitting the 3%, I believe. And then, secondly, you know, right now, we have the HAYES study moving forward, and if you look at the merit increases that, you know, alone, so you've got two things, you've got payroll growth, right, meaning the number of employees grow or things, or whatever the situation is, and then you have merit increases as well, which, you know, are in that neighborhood of reasons. But I think experientially, we're, we're there.
Yeah, every four, four years, we do an experience study where we look at all the assumptions, including the payroll assumption, the investment return, future salary increases, retirement rates, and we decide whether, you know, we pick assumptions that we think are reasonable, and the 3% at the last study was, we determined was reasonable, and it was below what the last 10 years' experience has been. The caution there with the 3% has more to do with the 24%, 24.09% that's being paid towards the DB's unfunded liability. That 24% assumes future payrolls of 3% per year, and so, that number would have a bigger effect. Any, any changes in... Any changes in payroll would affect that number much more than the hybrid costs.
And I guess that's what I'm getting at because we've experienced growth in the economy, right? And prior to that, in 2008, 2007, right, there was a downward turn in the market, and the economy wasn't doing so well. So what is your confidence level that, okay, in the next five years or so, I mean, we're just now paying off the, a lot of the liabilities that were due to the government from a payroll's perspective, overtime, the law enforcement's 555, this hay pay increase. When we, when a cash crunch and a cash flow issue did occur, what was one of the first things that a lot of the agencies started doing? Not paying their retirement benefits, right?
For a short time, yes.
Yeah. So do we still, are those agencies fully caught up? For example, GMH, is GMH fully caught up?
When that happened, what we did was, I mean, we, there were measures, certainly now there are greater measures in place to prevent that from happening.
Yeah, so my concern is really just, you know, a question to the Board is that there's a portion of the unfunded liability that would had to be borne by the retirement fund on their own. You can't, you have no, we have no controls in place, right, to stop laws being changed that would put that burden once again on the retirement fund. And I'm concerned that, yes, we've experienced this great economic growth, you know, in the last seven years or so. But if this 3% increase per year doesn't come to fruition, the contribution rates would have to increase. Or, which is, I know, a point of contention for the Board, that timeline in which to pay it has to increase.
That's correct.
Okay. And on top of that, we're adding a $100 million liability in order to figure out how to address an issue with a certain population of the D.C. members. And another question that I have for the retirement board is-
Can I just answer that one?
Yeah, sure.
Just real quick, because it, just to clarify, there's been, there's been a real change within the last 12 years that has prevented a lot of what has happened prior to that 12 years. And we talk about it a lot. It has to do with the Lamarena court case, the order from Judge Lamarena. Prior to that, there was an almost, there was some confusion as to whether the Board was simply to act on laws that have been passed by the legislature. And there are, I saw, I know of two different legal opinions from two different Attorney Generals that, in one case says that the Board is simply to exercise its duties ministerially, and if a law's passed, you just have to carry it out, and that's it. And then an exact opposite legal opinion from a different Attorney General. The Lamarena order clarified that for us. So the Board is now instructed explicitly to exercise its fiduciary duties to protect the fund. And that has done things like brought agencies current, where we've not only threatened but have in fact refused payment of retiring people. So there, you know, that, we talk about that a lot, and, you know, I don't want to understate the impact that that court order has had to help the fund prevent some of the things that you just referred to, which is, you know, things like passing laws that enhance benefits that are unpaid.
Okay. And then, you know, one of the other, you know, kind of elephant in the room that nobody's really talking about is, is it the government's responsibility? And this goes back to those participants in the D.C. plan that have the ability or have the option to invest their own money in the 457 plan to supplement the 401A. What is the Board's position on whether it's the government's responsibility or not to take that responsibility onto the taxpayer? To push that responsibility onto the taxpayer that, okay, well, since our defined contribution members didn't properly plan for their retirement and contribute to their 457 plan, well, let's have the taxpayers pay for it. Where does the Board stand on that?
And that's a really good question. From the retirement's perspective, there's so many, so many, we give the employee the option through the 457 to invest and grow their assets. What we were trying to do simply is to create the floor, create that security that doesn't exist, that it does exist in other plans and does exist in the private sector by way of Social Security. And so that's what, that's what our point was in trying to create this. Philosophically, you know, the position of the Board may differ, but realistically, we know that if something isn't done for that population, that you're going to, you're going to have, at the end of their working career, a welfare class of people who have worked for the last 20 or 30 years. And that was our motivation to try to, to try to create something to address that. The result is that-
Yeah, so, and I think that's why we're here today, is to figure out how to address it. Because at one point in time, it's going to be borne by the government from a cost perspective, whether it's, you know, what you refer to, whether they don't have enough for retirement, so they're relying on public programs to support their livelihood. But at any point in time during the last 10 years, was the Board of the opinion that the way this plan is supposed to work is that the employee has to take some responsibility for their retirement? And therefore, really, if the plan were to work as it was initially implemented, that provided that employee took some responsibility for their own retirement, that they wouldn't necessarily be in as bad a position as they are in now.
Sure.
Did the Board ever, was the Board of ever that, that opinion?
Well, you know, going back to the design of the 401A, 457, it's an individual choice plan. I mean, that's what it is. And, you know, as we've talked before, you know, the individual leg of the stool is always there in retirement. The government is not, you know, the Santa Claus of individual retirement. So, you know, I think this Board realizes, and that's part of the reason, Senator, that we included the 457 in the hybrid, is that the employee has, you know, an increased responsibility for their own retirement, be it, you know, at a floor or above. And I have to believe that, you know, the issue is the one that Jerry raises. From a practical standpoint, we've seen the results of what's happened in the D.C. plan, the 401A, 457 kind of design. And the answer is, is we've got people with $40,000 in their accounts. So the practical thing is, is people aren't thinking ahead to retirement, and perhaps until it's too late. They're not putting away the amounts of money that, you know, that individual leg that they should be putting away. And, you know, to that end, I absolutely agree with David John. You know, you, the individual has to be out there as well. And I think that's influenced our philosophy somewhat. We don't, we're not just looking for the government to provide all the answers, at least, you know, not from my side.
I was just going to add, you know, on that, not to kick the dead horse, but going back, is, you know, there's some things that could have been and should be done right away on the 457, even if we're having this discussion, is, one, instead of having it as a voluntary enrollment, do what the trend is, and that's have it a negative enrollment out. And so you go back in and you reengage the participants, all of them, the workers, the current workers and the new hires, and basically say, "Starting on X date, we're going to start deferring XYZ into 457." Typically, it starts at 4% with a 2% increase until you get to a certain rate. Almost nobody will sign out. Secondly, something I've been pledging for, or trying to get through for at least 15 years now, is a small match into the 457. If you would have done that, you would have made Great West jobs so much easier, even if it was 2%. If you would have said 25 cents in the dollar, you know, so the employee puts in eight, the employer puts in two. Those little things, but it gets back to Chris's point. Who's been fighting for the D.C. member? I know there's a bill that was pending from Senator Limtiaco to separate it. It's, and I keep kicking people, I don't want to. The Board has got a big job, and the DB plan has been a work, that would be enough work for me on a Board. But to have them having to deal with both of these issues and then trying to be fair to both sides, you know, I really think part of the problem is going down, is just having separate representation that's fully focused on it. But, and I just want to make a quick point, is Judge brought up a good point on the bonds, you know, would the increased funding help it? I asked the bond guys, "In any scenario, do you see it as a positive?" But it gets back to, this is all, you know, us guessing at this. They said, "No, they don't see any opportunity that would be a positive." And I, because I went through it, I said, "Well, you know, Puerto Rico is out of the picture for the most part, you know, the demand." They said, "The demand will be there." We're talking about ratings. And they didn't see that there would be an opportunity for it to be a positive sign. But again, we're just guessing at all of that stuff. But getting back to the funding nature, simple things can be done to make the plan just flip a switch. And one of them is auto enrollment and auto increase, making people opt out. It just doesn't need to be for new hires. You can go back and, the new programs are called re-enrollment. And so you reengage, and you get enrollments up in a minute. People just don't opt out. They just want some advice. They want to be told what to do. They don't want to be, "Oh, it's, it's up to you." No. It needs, the whole discussion needs to change, and it's, "This is what you should do, and you will see some huge results." So a small match, auto enrollment, you'll get the whole thing cruising right along on the 457 side. Can't solve going backwards, but certainly can fix things going forward. I mean, they're very small little things, and you wouldn't, it's just a change in discussion, and it, the effects are great.
I just, so that you're aware, that your participants do have, we go out there, we do the education, and we've seen an increase in participation with the 457, but not enough. And, yeah, many of them do, our experience has been, they come in and they want us to tell them what to do, aside from saving more, but, you know. So slowly but surely, participation is increasing, but not fast enough for the way. And the fund's done a great job with regard to just getting information out there and with our agencies and working with the agencies. So really, it's up to the participant. We've given them everything, the Board has given them everything, and it's really up to them now to make that decision. So, and participate.
We are going to have to have another one. Hi, Mr. Chairman.
You know, after this whole morning sitting here, listen, and that we have all the, thank you very much for these roundtable. But we've got to go back that the original D.C. law is designed such a way to be self-directed, and it's up to individuals, and to be out, and number two, it was designed to eliminate the, no more unfunded liability, is to kind of stop the, that's why it's completely separated. That's the two fundamentals. And then also, in order to make sure that's self-directed, the law created a third party, whereas the Board really, Board only provide a table, table menu, a table of menus to select based on advice, what kind of, where to invest. But it's still the individual prerogative to select which one, and the third party would achieve, to the third party selection with the Great West. Great West was not designed to be an advisory. It was not designed, it was not by law allowed them to be, do any kind of investment advised. It was strictly to administer the plan, as a separate from a part. The other concept there, that we know that after, since 1995, that's when we started experiencing the biggest, the first problem that we overcame was that we find this withdrawal. They could withdraw anything just to get, just to get married, or just for, to settle a mortgage payment. They could withdraw money just for, to go on vacation. So the Board did take action on that by cutting based on the statistic data provided by the Great West. So that kind of stopped the bleeding from that because the individuals themselves are just bleeding out themselves. The second one is that the Board went to explore how to improve retirement, you know, the replacement ratio of these individual D.C. participants. And we find that they're not really being a self-directed plan, actually compared to a group of investments that we do on the DB benefit, where we had investment advisor, investment manager that actually does that. And the professional done that, that you could get better return if it's professionally managed, a group of investment versus individual directed. Because as you said, we all know that these participants half, or more than half, they don't even know what's the difference between a stock and a bond. And so we, unfortunately, that's what the plan designed, the setup. So first of all, we stopped the hardship by maintaining it. Second, we start working with the late Ben Pangolino, looking at the statistics that showing that we know that we're adding people to the welfare role. So the Board did, I think, went through, but unfortunately, this bill that we're discussing, as you know, has been, you know, that's been going for the last five years. We've been working on it back and forth. Questions were asked, how to cure, but now it's been 20 years now. You've got 8,000 people that are now, should be ready to retire, and there's no way they can see the end of the tunnel for them. That's why this hybrid came into being. The original thought was to have a, continue the D.C. and have a supplemental hybrid that provide for that. But then actually, it shows that it's going to be very costly. The government is responsible, will have to increase their cost. It's going to be, we're no different from abolishing the D.C. and go back to the old DB plan. And that was also a consideration. And that's the, that was the cost for the government itself is just, it's not, it would be unheard of. This is why, the reason we got out of the DB plan. The second thing also that we asked Great West, what alternative do they have that maybe we provide, slacking a change of law? And that's why they came up with a secure foundation. And secure foundation just came out two, three years ago, when they started implementing it. And Great West really have no responsibility to promote their own product. And that's, that's the problem in the basic law. And these are things that we've been working on. Now, if we could amend the law, say, "Okay, give Great West an advisory responsibility," they don't have that. The West provide the secure foundation, which they've done that as an option. That came from the Board's reaction. They didn't, they say that it's there, but they can't do it without direction from the Board, which we did. So that brings us up to this point now, this afternoon, this morning discussion, is that we're now looking at various many options. As I indicated, there are four options we provide. We went through combining with D.C., having a separate supplemental, or a secure foundation, or what we have now. So Rich has been working on this plan for the last maybe three, four years already, back and forth. The underlying thing is that this plan, DB plan, the old plan, no matter what happens, you still have to pay for the unfunded. That's actually a fixed cost. As long as there are people, there are about 7,000 retirees right now, and about 2,000 more on DB. Now, when you create a hybrid, you assume, we do assume that there's going to be an unfunded liability. Whether we like it or not, is there, now, the option is to go back to what they call Social Security. And we did work for Social Security, got it from 1989. The statistics show that it was something that we had to work on. And the Social Security adamantly would not extend it to government employees in Guam. You have, they opened up the window for temporary workers at commercial employment. They opened up that window for the commercial and casual employees because they were not covered at all. So Congressman Wompak did ask Social Security, did amend the law. And that's all they amended the law, is to allow the temporary worker. But they did not amend Section 2118 or the definition of a state. In that definition state, it is Guam and D.C., the State of Columbia, and I think Virgin Island were not included. That's one. Number two, the, we always wanted to, if we had gone Social Security, it would have been better off from the very beginning if we had a choice back in 1995. It took that long. And I don't think we can say that the Board didn't, or the government in general, did not seek Social Security. We have been asking for Social Security. We didn't have Social Security in 1952. Social Security was extended to Guam in 1968. And by that time, the members of the retirement fund, members of the government employees actually voted not to accept the Social Security at that time, 1968. Because I guess at that time, they were, they said, "We're better off than going back to Social Security." Now, perhaps what in 1995- Now, perhaps what, in 1995, that window of opportunity was open if we had social security available in 1995. But it is not, social security closed the window. They didn't want to open it. Up till now, and good luck, that's why two senators, Nicholas and Congressman Abadany. Hopefully, they'll open up. Will they open up? But would we want to wait until they open up? What's going to happen even to 6,000 employees? That's what we're acting now. I agree that maybe take care of the 6,000 employees now and then henceforth, any new employee will be D.C. plus social security, if and when social security comes in. Now, what are we going, we keep on talking about this, we're going to be talking about this for the next five or 10 years. These nine, six, 7,000 employees, they're now in almost the prime age of retirement. And we all know, it's not going to be enough. As you said, 48% of the, of the replacement ratio. There's no way. Now, either we pass something or, or sit back and let it go and wait for social security. In the meantime, there's a vacuum here. We are now creating a, a group of people that will eventually end up in the welfare. The D.C. plan itself has no spousal benefits, has no dependents benefit at all. And that's, that's the thing we need to cry here. What are we going to do with these DCP employees? When can we start? 1995 is now 2014. It's going to be 2018, 2017, when they start asking them? That's the concern here. The DB employees are appropriate, they're okay now. They're, they're fine. They only got 2,000 employees more to go in the DB. And as long as the, the government exists, that unfunded will still be there and the government still has to pay the obligation of 24%. And the DB plan is working on towards improving the retirement investment, the investment return. The rate of return has been very good. That's what's containing the actual, the cost for the government contribution. So let's put aside the DB itself, let's work on, on this new, the employee. Forget about trying to integrate that. Let's put aside the old DB plan and if you want to accept a new DB plan on a very modified lower benefits, that's exactly what the hybrid is. The hybrid actually is in name only, only because you added 457 in there. Take away the 457, you have a modified defined benefit plan. We all recognize that. There's no way of hiding behind any of it. But the key, at least, this so-called hybrid gives some future, looking into what's going to happen to 7,000 people. And that's, 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 that's what's on the table now. What are we going to do with the 7,000 people? And we keep on ignoring it. We've been working for the last five, six, five, seven years. Every day, every day, we got people in that, that class, they're screaming, says, what am I going to do? What's going to happen to me? Oh, the original D.C. plan, I grant you, has very ideological dreams. We dream that you should be able to portable, make it portable that you can move your money from in, from the government to the private, so on visa, vice versa. Also, there's, that our people are sophisticated enough, they should know how to invest their own money, if you're self-directed. Well, we all proved that, it didn't work out that way. The question now that, how do we reckon with it? And I think this bill, and we'll try to reckon on that, amending it to any what you want. But the bottom line is, who, these D.C. employees, what's going to happen to them? What are we telling these people to start, keep on working for the government, my sorry, you have no future in terms of retirement? As I said earlier, these people, when they retire, what do you do? Just give them a golden watch and thank you very much for serving? And next thing is, we invite them to apply for Medicaid or social security, or social welfare from the Department of Public Health? I don't like to look at a, a D.C. employees and their face and to tell them that. And that's exactly what they're asking. You've seen them. I mean, we're not the only one, a recipient of this thing. Every one of them is in this room, I've been face to face one time or another with the D.C. employees. What is going on? What's going to happen to me? What happened to my wife? What happened to my children if I die? That's, that's all I'm asking, ladies and gentlemen, the board is cognizant of this thing. We are working hard, we're probably the lowest high, lowest paid board in the whole government of Guam. We got people in the board that are particularly volunteering. And that's the key. Now, you name it, you name a board that is paid more than the, than the retirement board. They help people, right? So you know, all these today, yeah, the old DB, right? You know, what, you're getting paid? Yeah, really. Everybody's getting paid, the Hasty, the overtime pay, but not the board members. We're volunteers, you know, so, so to speak. So that's, that's all we're calling, which is crying for help on the behalf of these employees. And you should be doing the same thing. Okay? That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just really need to clarify something here. We're all working for the same goal, okay? And this isn't a problem that just manifested itself overnight. This is a problem that's festered and I think we're working on trying to find a solution for it. I really think that the dialogue that we're having right now is very healthy. We're talking about what's the long-term ramifications of us just rolling this out and applying it to everybody? Are there ways that we can apply this to address the, the needs of those who are, who are going to be affected and not completely transform the entire retirement system altogether? Are there ways that we can do this so that we can make sure the benefits are equitable to employees versus the D.C. plan members just basically taking it on the head and, and having to make the bulk of their own contributions? And, you know, the, the assumption that, or the, the idea that this is something that everybody's taking too lightly is, I think, the absolutely opposite idea. We're taking this very, very seriously. This is something that we're, we're having a roundtable on. This is a bill that actually made it to the floor already. I think this is the closest we've ever come to resolving the D.C. plan members' plight in the last 20 years. And this is a 20-year-old problem. This isn't a two-year-old problem that just all of a sudden crept up on everybody. So I think that we definitely need to work on, on addressing the issue and finding a solution, but we also need to be prudent. And we shouldn't just rush the idea of a solution because the rhetoric is that, you know, what's going to happen to so-and-so? What's going to happen to so-and-so was the question that we should have been asking over the last 20 years. And we're here today trying to address that question. And I think that we're doing it very, very prudently. And I think that the idea of how we're going to address that particular group, while at the same time perhaps not transforming the entire retirement system altogether to the point where D.C. plan members coming into this system, new employees are basically just funding their own retirements, while every other government of Guam employee that came before them had a, a substantial amount of government assistance in, in the creation of their benefit. You know, the, the same logic that rushed the entry into the D.C. plan back in 1995 in order to address the unfunded liability that resulted in the rollout of the D.C. plan getting us to this point, should not be repeated in rushing the rollout of the hybrid plan to the point where we're going to be coming here 20 years later again saying, what have we done and how are we going to fix it? I think that we need to be prudent this time around. And I really respect a lot of the work that's gone into it and I really respect the dialogue from our, our private, private sector participants and also from Mr. Boudasi, the representing a D.C. plan member perspective. Because these are all the kind of things that need to be put into the pot and we're going to finally make this soup that's going to be the retirement plan that we adopt for the people of Guam. And we all know that when you rush the cooking, something's going to come out bad. Okay? But we do need to move prudently and as expeditiously as possible to address those people who are going to be affected. And time is of the essence, but it also doesn't mean that we should rush. And I think that what we're doing right now is pretty, pretty prudent. I think it's a good discussion so far. So I thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I thank you. And I really need to get all 15 of us engaged in this discussion. Embarrassingly, I mean, I admit that I was at the summit five years ago and I did not join Senator Ben in the discussions over the last five years. But all of us have to commit to being in this discussion. And it can't just be one or two of us. It's got to be 15 members of this legislature because when we finally make that decision, it's hard to go to the floor and have people all of a sudden coming out and having a question out of left field that we could have and should have addressed at, at some earlier date. And so I'm going to schedule another roundtable. I'll, I'll be contacting all of you about a, a time that's beneficial to all of us and convenient, so, but we will continue it. And I now make sure, make my commitment that if, if I have to, I will be calling it every couple of weeks just so that I keep all of my colleagues addressed on this issue and, and engaged because this has to be addressed at some time and sometime soon. And, and I thank the retirement fund for all the work that they've done and, you know, the listening audience, they don't get a stipend. They don't, they don't get a $50 or $250 to, to go to a meeting and they meet, they have, I, I think a meeting almost every day. They, they have the due diligence meetings, they have the, the workman's compensation meetings, they have the disability hearings. I mean, I, my hat's off really to all of you, especially those of you from the private sector who are willing to devote this much time. But I want to, at this point, say that I'm going to try to keep my colleagues engaged in this discussion and I thank those that stayed. And hopefully in the next one, we'll keep having more, more and more senators attend and have an understanding of what needs to be done. So I thank everybody and I know we've gone quite a bit of time and it's lunchtime and people are hungry. And so I thank everybody and so we'll be, and thank you very much, David John and Alice for coming today, all right?